Good morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started with the county commission meeting for Monday, February 25th, 2013. It's 9:01, so we'll get started. If I could get everybody to please put their communication devices on vibrate so we don't get to enjoy each other's phone calls. And I'll start out this morning, as we always do, with turning on my screen here so I can see, with Economic Development Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one item this morning, discussion of soliciting bids for sale of 35 acre parcel in Santa Rosa Industrial Park for a proposed distribution center project. And I would ask Shannon Ogletry to come forward and give us an overview.
Good morning. Yes, sir. We are courting a project, Project Gold Rush, that is looking at purchasing 35 acres off East Milton Road, just north of Hackney. The company will be anticipating having 250 employees plus at that single location. And this is just one of the first steps into securing the site for this company.
Mr. Chairman, this piece of property is just north of Hackney Distribution now? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
On East Milton Road?
Yes, sir. At the corner of East Milton and Judicial Drive.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, then I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report. Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah, thank you, Shannon. Now, get out of here and go back to work. All right. All right, we'll go on now to the Administrative Committee. Item number one under Administrative Committee is discussion of submerged land lease with the Florida Bureau of Public Land Administration for Navar Beach Pier through January 15th, 2016. I've got backup in there. And Mr. Walker, I'll turn this over to you, please.
Mr. Chairman, you see Ms. Jones' email in there. We currently do have a 30-year lease for that submerged land lease, which is just the land under the pier, if you will, that's into the waters of the state. And we have a 30-year lease, but they charge a 25% premium for what they call an extended lease. If we go to the five-year lease, we will not have to pay the premium. Our recommendation is to go to the five, you know, just go to the five-year. I mean, the 25% per year could be pretty expensive, as you see.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin. I'd just like to play devil's advocate for a moment. Worst-case scenario, could they actually, under a five-year lease, decide not to lease it to us and run our pier themselves after we built it? That's exactly the question I'm looking for, technically.
I was going to flip to her because I've had that discussion.
Technically, yes. I think Roger may have had this discussion. I've had the discussion. The folks at the state say they don't reasonably foresee that happening, that they are not in that business, they don't do that kind of thing. But the technical answer to your question is, yes.
I submit that we go slow on this and think our way through this. Three years from now, we're going to inherit, we, the state of Florida, is going to inherit a real millstone in the Obamacare. It's 100% funded for three years. At the end of the third year, the state's going to be scrambling for revenue sources.
All right, other comments? I had some questions myself on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynchery.
Roger, did you have discussions with the state as well? I had the same concerns that Commissioner Melvin did and still do have those concerns. So, you know, I think, as he said, we need to proceed with caution and make sure that anything we do is based on all the possible information.
We had the technical answer is, yes, they could, because the lease is the lease. But the fact that we've got an $8 million investment out into waters of the state, the person said that they've never heard of it happening. Doesn't mean it couldn't happen, but that it had never happened in the past with public peers and those sorts of things.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
What is our annual revenue on the pier?
Yeah, probably 250, 300,000, something like that. I'm not sure what we net out. We could get that.
So, far as a lease, you're looking at maybe a little over 10% investment to make sure you retain that lease if you want with a long-term? It's just a thought I want to make sure also, because I have the same concerns, because I know how the state is. They've been doing a lot of things to generate revenue, and normally they either give the bill to the county or take the revenue from the county. And I want to make sure that we do the right thing on this. So, I think we need to continue looking into it and weigh all avenues.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynchery.
Also, just to clarify, so for myself, it's about an additional $5,000, $5,500 per year if we stick with the status quo. So, really, we'd be saving $5,000 per year but giving up a 20-year guaranteed lease. One other thing, we have our RFP coming up for pier operations. If we convert this to a five-year lease, then in the future, the longest we could obligate ourselves under the terms of a lease would be whatever the remaining term on that five-year lease is, because we wouldn't be able to enter in. If someone came in with, you know, a home-run project and wanted to develop something there at the foot of the pier or within that footprint, we wouldn't be able to guarantee them any more than five years at the longest. So, Roger?
Yes, just for clarification, the lease actually starts at the mean high-water line or mean sea level. It's over the waters of the state, and everything landward would be ours.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Melvin.
I hadn't run the numbers yet, but Commissioner Lynchery did. And $5,000, $5,500 a year seems like a very modest premium to pay to buy that insurance that we control up here for 20 years. I know we're not going to vote on this today, but I personally am going to lean in that direction, given what I know this morning.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Salter.
That was my same thoughts, too. If we can lock in a 20-year lease at today's prices based on the unknown of what the state's going to do and the federal government, that would be my position as well.
Okay. I just need a little clarification on this, either Roger or Angie, either one. The lease is based on the proceeds that we obtained from that or just it's a set amount?
Based on square footage. Last year's payment was $22,750 plus about a $5,700 premium.
Okay. What, I mean, the only, so the only thing that could change that is if the Bureau of, there's about five different bureaus involved in this, but the Bureau of Public Land Administration decided to up the price per square footage?
That is correct. Our lease does not have a stated price in it. It says we pay whatever has been determined by the Florida Administrative Code, so that formula can change.
And that's legislative action, or is that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Just so we're clear on that, I also agree that it's little to pay to have a locked-in lease for that amount of time. And I do have a question, too, and I didn't have time to look it up, because basically I've never done this before, I wear glasses for stuff. Ripper parion upland property, that's the property we own that the pier connects to?
Yes, that's correct. As you project that lease out, it's the properties, as the lease comes into the land, ripper parion properties are the adjacent properties. Summer winds to the west, Santa Rosa County.
Okay. Where does, I guess, one of my questions is, is this agreement ends at where? At the mean-high-tide line, high-water line?
Well, actually, that was revised with the adoption a number of years ago, when the board adopted the erosion control line for our dune restoration. It's actually at the toe of the northern portion of the berm is considered state-controlled land for discussion purpose.
Northern portion of the berm?
Northern toe of the berm, yes, sir.
Okay, so that's about, what, 20 feet out, 20 feet out on the pier, approximately, 20, 30 feet?
Probably more than that, sir.
Okay, more than that, okay. All right, good. That answers my question there. All right, if we don't act on this, Ms. Jones, on Thursday, we just strike this from the agenda, do we, we already have the 20-year lease in place? This is a modification?
You currently have a 30-year lease in place, so if you're not going to change it, I don't think you need any additional action.
All right. From what I've heard today, I see no reason on this being back on Thursday's agenda. So, we'll just strike it. If there's no objections, then I'll strike it from Thursday's agenda. Hearing no objections, we will not re, we will not take this back up again on Thursday. And we'll stay with what we're at. Okay, next item on Administrative Committee is discussion of use of nature, Navar Nature Walk Park by the Navar Beach Area Chamber of Commerce for its annual park concert series from 5:00 PM till 9:00 PM each of the following two Thursdays, May 16th, 23rd, and 30th, June 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, July 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th, and August 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th. Move that to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes till Thursday. Item three is discussion of soliciting proposals for the following services required for disaster emergency response, disaster recovery administrative services, and disaster debris planning and support. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, there were two emails, the disaster recovery administrative services, which are the first bullet point, is a new item. We've been providing those services in-house. Currently, they are eligible for FEMA reimbursement. This would seem like the way to, for us to go with that. This, we've never done it before, but it takes an awful amount of staff time, whether it's Ms. Harris, whether it's Ms. Bell's case now and others. We would just contract that out. The disaster debris planning and support, as you can tell from Mr. Whitfield's email, we had solicited those proposals, I believe, in 2006, actually used the debris monitoring for Dennis. We had all the fun of doing it and diving ourselves, and it certainly was much better experience for us using the consultant. That RFP has been renewed four, five years. We just thought it was time to send out another request for proposal and shortlist those firms and get them approved.
All right. And I think Commissioner Salter and I have found out the hard way just how important it is to have this stuff in place. So, I pray that we don't have to relearn that same process. And just to the general public that's out there, this RFP costs the county nothing other than a little time and paperwork to get it out there, because once these firms are basically locked into the agreement, there's no monthly or annual payment to maintain that agreement. If I'm wrong, tell me, but I've known this in the past.
It's only activated in the event of a declared disaster.
But it certainly makes things faster, helps the county and our citizens get back on their feet if another disaster like that occurs. So, any comments from board members? If not, then we'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, we'll take it up again Thursday. Item four is public hearing. Item scheduled for 9:30 Thursday, February 28th. We have none. And now, we'll move to Mr. Blaylock for engineering report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a discussion of an obstruction to the penetrations of the visibility 20-to-1 surface at Peter Prince Airport. If you can envision, at the end of the runway, we have a 20-to-1 approach slope coming into the airport right here. The backup that I included in your package was an email I got from FAA saying we had a number of obstructions into that 20-to-1 approach slope. We have a power pole along our southern property line, a number of pine trees in this area, and I'll flip over to another PowerPoint and pull it up real quickly. And actually, these were the noted penetrations. The inspector was set up here using an instrument, actually shot and shot distances, and it actually has latitude and longitude and the amount of the penetration. There's two resolutions to this issue. One, FAA has immediately said that our 20-to-1 approach slope is going to be a VFR-only, and that relates to a GPS approach. VFR, they're not going to let them come in GPS on instrument at night. That's immediate. We have the ability to remove the penetrations, which we will recommend to the board that we do that, and then post those penetrations we can't remove, which is the railroad. The railroad actually has a height above it, I believe it's 80 feet or whatever that is, that penetrates that surface. We have to set a string of poles and put red lights there showing that potential penetration. It's not always. The only thing that will remain, once we remove all the trees, would be the Gulf Power power pole, and then the poles that they have said in their literature that we need to mark the railroad potential penetration. The other thing is, we can certify the VASI, the visual approach slope indicator, which is the instruments we have, that when you're flying, white over white, you know, you're too high, red over white, or white over red, no, red over white, you're all right, and then red over red, you're dead. So, basically, there are lights that shine, just like on an aircraft carrier, that tells you you're on the proper approach slope. We can go through a process with FAA and certify that approach slope. And then, then the third, of course, is remove the penetrations and mark it as noted. Just so the board knows that we are proactive, our surveyor, this is on their workload, as soon as we can get out there, we're going to verify that these penetrations, number one, are real, and if they're not, then we'll note them as we go through the process. So, with that, we would recommend removing the trees consistent right through here down, taking that group of pine trees, or if the board so desired, take all of the trees, and probably be better to illustrate that on that previous, is all of the trees have been removed on the east side from here back. That's where that taxiway project that was just completed, there are no trees there. There's this clump right here that's all remaining, and we could wait.
You're too far east, aren't you, Roger?
Excuse me, sir?
Aren't you pointing at here too?
Yes.
Now, you're right.
It moved, right. From, this is the remaining trees that are in place right here. And we would remove either straight down this way or take them all the way back to here. And then, just so the board knows, when, a number of years ago, Santa Rosa County obtained navigation easements from these properties on the south side of US 90, I'm not certain we have enough to go all the way through all of the penetrations, but certainly we will verify, contact the owners. We did this back about 15 years ago, and have those trees either topped or removed. When you take a, when you top a pine tree, essentially, it's my understanding, you kill it. So, we take the pine trees all the way down and top the oaks and everything.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Roger, if we agree to this, is the problem the height of the pines? And if we, I know planes and trees don't mix, there's no, there's nothing rocket science about that. But if, say like if there's some nice or oaks in there, rather than just completely strip that property, since there's not going to be future hangers or anything like that in there, is the problem the height of the pine trees or the thickness of the grove of trees? Could we maybe leave a few of the oaks around there to kind of?
Yes. The answer is, it's not the density, it's the height of the pine tree. It's penetrating that surface.
So, we necessarily don't have to go through there and just clear-cut it? We could, we could take out the taller pines or take out all, you know, go in there and pick out some nice oaks, clean the rest of it out and let it grow?
Well, just as they said in the literature, the penetrations are, they flag one tree, and there may be a number of cousins there. We will remove all penetrations, okay? Oak or pine, but leave the oaks that don't penetrate.
Okay. All right, I'd be for that. I'm just not for just going in there and clear-cut it, because, but I'll listen to the rest of the members of the board. Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roger, I've got a couple of questions. One, did they close both 1-8 and 3-6, or just 3-6?
Just 3-6.
Okay. The other thing is, is there enough timber in there just to have a timber sale? Or what are we going to do with the timber?
We would approach the people that Avis use for, as he goes through, whenever you authorize removal of timber, and we'd submit, ask for proposals to remove X amount of pine trees.
Right.
And then, once we get across on the south side, then we couldn't use this regular timber company, then we're into a tree service.
I understand. Is this a current picture?
I apologize, not. We don't have the current aerial.
I was going to say, we might, if we're, if, in order to put together a timber sale, as long as we're clearing it, we might want to look at that.
That's already gone.
That's all gone, it's clear-cut? Okay.
Yes, this is all gone. That's our hangar project.
The one difference from the last time we did it is they did not make us the railroad requirement. That must be a fairly new one, because obviously, we didn't have to put up any of the poles before, so that's a new requirement. The rate, obviously, the railroad was there 12, 15 years ago when we did this.
And our, and that penetration was noted on our master plan we're currently operating under, so it's not like that's a surprise.
Roger, I do have a question. Since we have conflict with both Gulf Power and their lines, and then also the railroad, what's the feasibility of Gulf Power marking their lines with these red balls, rather than us putting up two poles and stretching the wire and putting up the balls? Can't they hang the balls on the Gulf Power guide wire or the?
The illumination is the issue with the pole. You put a pole up so you can illuminate.
Oh, you can illuminate. It's not just round balls, it's?
It's not just round balls, no. They say they need to be lit for nighttime operations.
But they'll also have them beach balls, red beach balls hanging on it, or?
We can have that done in conjunction with Gulf Power. But for now, they're just saying we got to, we got to illuminate the Gulf Power penetration, and then along the railroad tracks, put up additional poles and lights to show the potential penetration of a railroad car coming through.
All right. Will you be working with Gulf Power, see if we can just do, you know, use what's there, basically, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Morgan? Okay. Great. All right, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask Roger to get with Becky Cato, because we just had a meeting last week with Randy Roy, Gulf Power Company, Ms. Cato, regarding power structures within military airport zones, which includes whitening and our outlying fields. So, some pretty good information came out of there. There are some new alternatives, I think. They've got illuminating stuff you can put on poles now. So, we've had that discussion, and so I would just simply ask Roger to maybe have that same discussion with Becky and see where we are with that, as it pertains to our joint land use study.
Great. Now, our airport's definitely growing, so we get on board with all this. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll move this to, what action we need to take on this Thursday, Roger? Just direct staff to?
Direct staff to solicit proposals for removal.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move that to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it'll be discussed again Thursday. Go ahead.
Okay. Item number two is, we recommend award of Tallwood Court Road Paving MSBU to Perdido Grading and Paving in the amount of $38,000 as the lowest bidder meeting specifications. This is a small MSBU off of Central Parkway in US 98. This will be about the fifth MSBU in that one little dirt road subdivision. There are a number of homes that are already constructed, and I think two vacant lots, and they have petitioned and agreed to assess themselves to pave it.
Comments, questions by members of the board? If not, we'll move it to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it'll pass till Thursday.
Item number three is just an information item. Just wanted to update the board and go through the actual platting procedures for subdivisions within Santa Rosa County. As you see on the preliminary plat phase, engineering is the lead agency. We receive all of the initial inputs from the consultants. We distribute it and coordinate with the planning department, planning and zoning, health department, planning and zoning, and addressing, make certain that we've got all of those I's dotted, T's crossed, with computer now, and the computer department is actually working through with our addressing. Receiving all that information, go through a series of submittals, resubmittals, red line checks, and then when we bring it to you, all of those agencies have commented, and they have addressed the comments of all those agencies. Then the board would approve it, and of course, then afterward, we distribute it back to everyone, so everyone knows that there's a plat out there. And the preliminary plat is a planning type of a document. It has technical information on it, but it also is the first time that the Santa Rosa County and the developer and his consultants actually interact on a final plan. We do encourage them, as you see on the second page, that is actually what is posted on the internet for consultants that actually shows a flow chart. It's much more complex, with a lot of seemingly perpetual do-loops in it, but that is what we go through to get it to you, the board. And then, upon approval of the preliminary plat, the board would have an opportunity to approve construction plans. And construction plans is actually where the development order is issued. That is the right for him to go clear and grub and construct. And upon completion of construction, or an appropriate security or bond for the unremaining improvements, he's able to submit and record a plat. And again, you see the agencies involved in getting down to the final plat stages. And then, once you approve the plat, then it goes to the clerk's office and then distribute it to all those agencies on the bottom. So, that is generic platting procedures. And then, the second page, like I say, that's the nuts and bolts we live by. That's actually how we go through to get comments and corrections and resubmittals. So, with that, open up any questions you may have relative to the subdivisions.
Roger, I'm glad you put this on there, because I, you know, I kind of raised the question two weeks ago, as far as, you know, why a builder couldn't move forward and build houses? Because I've seen no risk to the county if, you know, if two houses, 10 houses, 100 houses were built upon that point. What point in this, in this plat procedure depiction you give us, would it be comfortable? Let's hope that, and let's pray that things pick up here in the future, when we get back to where we're building houses and building subdivisions and putting people to work. And where on here could we streamline that process a little bit? Because I see it as there's no risk to the county. Like, two weeks ago, had we allowed them to go ahead and start building houses until they got this final plat approved? That's two weeks, you know, Joe Plummer, or Joe Sheetrock Finisher, or Joe somebody could be, Joe the Plumber could be out there. And it may not make a big difference to some people, but, you know, some people, it may mean making their car payment, going to work two weeks earlier, or getting their house payment made, or putting food on the table. So, is there a point in this discussion or a place in this matrix that we would be comfortable moving that up? Pending, no, no COs applied to none of these homes until all the requi, uh, all the prerequisites are met. I mean, to me, the developer and the contractor are who is at risk, uh, more so than the county, but, you know, I, I must be missing something somewhere, because I, you know, so if I am, I'd like to hear that. So, so me and whoever else is confused, if I'm the only one, thank God, but, uh, would understand it a little better, I mean, uh, so. I'll turn it over to Roger, Angie, somebody help me out here.
Maybe we'll both chime in for you. The flow chart that was put together called subdivision plating procedures, a lot of what you see at the top of that chart are county processes that we have implemented to, to help folks who are wanting to develop property. But much of what you see at the bottom of that chart, under final plat, is actually, actually statutory. There's a whole chapter in the Florida statutes, the Florida Plat Act, that says what has to be done, what, what has to be on the face of a plat? What has to be done for a piece of property to be platted, how it has to be recorded, all the people have to participate in that kind of thing. So while the top of the chart is not statutory, the bottom of the chart is, the top of the chart helps people get to the bottom of the chart. And so the end game is statutorily prescribed and we are required to follow that.
And to follow along with Angie said, um, last, uh, last meeting I said, talked about the seventy-foot meets and bounds descriptions. Just to clarify that, in our LDC, it, it just has been modified to allow them to start two homes and that, model homes, and they can start just as soon as they obtain a development order up in the construction plan phase. So our ordinances address the fact that people want to get a start, want to get a model home in place. Uh, the board in years past approved a, a temporary start so someone could have some, uh, I believe it was the parade of homes, get some houses started in one of those subdivisions. But you asked what, what we could do, we will certainly look at speeding the process, but do understand that we require the security such as that developer and contract falls off the face of the earth, the county still has a security to go contract it, to finish it, so that the people who do have an investment in the subdivision buying the lots or say started a house would get paid.
Okay, I, I guess, I think y'all know where I'm trying to get to with this, could we, would a simple way to handle this be to, because a lot of what's going on today is, uh, you know, the process of starting one or two houses versus five, it may be a matter that it's, uh, it's more economical to start five.
Commissioner, the, there's nothing in this checklist that says a, a developer could not walk, come to a meeting and get his preliminary plat approved, get his construction plans approved, post a bond, security and title opinion and record the plat in the same meeting, it's never happened, practically speaking, but our ordinances provide that that could happen. So I don't see how you can streamline it any better.
Okay, well, like you said, it's never happened.
Mechanism is in place to allow that, practically speaking, nobody would ever do that. Most developers take it to an eighty-five, ninety percent complete and then post a bond for those small portion to record the plat.
Okay, alright, Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, uh, great, I, I really appreciate that, that's added to my understanding, but I do have a question, uh, about the construction plans phase. Does that apply strictly to subdivision plating procedures? Or is that generally how it flows? Because my question is, uh, specifically, can material changes be made after the presentation to the board?
Are you talking to the construction plans, not to the plat? Is that, is that the question she asked me?
Well, I guess to both points, but, but it generally, uh, once something, uh, someone obtains permission to construct something. Does that ever, if there's a material, a material significant change to those plans, does it have to come back to the board or since it?
That is a judgment call between planning and zoning and engineering, because as you know, the Florida legislature has passed laws in recent years that we cannot caveat our development orders on other state and federal permits. We have to issue ours based on our ordinances and sometimes wetlands issues, those sorts of things. If it's material, we will bring it back, if it's a matter of losing a lot here or there or adjusting a lot line for a wetlands issue, we do that administratively. But that's a judgment call between the planning director and myself and the county attorney. But if it's significant, certainly if they were going to double the densities or revise the plat so instead of having seventy lots, they were going to do a hundred and forty, that's material change, that would come back to you, yes, sir.
And material changes to the plat would definitely come back to you guys?
Mr. Henry, please.
You're on.
I'm sorry, let me turn my, which one?
You're on.
Oh, it's on, okay. Um, I wasn't here to speak to this, but, uh, since it came up, I'd like to. The, um, used to give a little history in the county here, and I've been building here for thirty years. I was a small builder, started out small and was fortunate enough to build our company up because our product was very popular. But when we started thirty years ago in the county, we would go in, um, develop, start putting our roadways in. Once we got the sewer in and got our road base stable enough, we'd start building houses. And what that did for a small company, a small home building company like us, was really helped us a lot on the cash flow. Yes, it does put a lot of people to work a little sooner, but the biggest thing is, is for small businesses to be able to compete with larger businesses. And I was, by being able to do that, I was able to compete with, the only big company at that time was Mitchell Homes here in the, in the county. It allowed me to be a competitor, a player, and bring, uh, ultimately actually bring prices down in the county. Uh, because I built a, um, better product, a better price, and I was willing to do it for less profit. Um, the bottom line, what this will let builders do is to, you'll, I think this county needs to look at, and this is one of the things in the cog of, um, being able to have smaller builders build in this county. Um, you're in the situation right now, we're coming out of a recession, where, um, where the financial regulations, all is going in place. It's never about wiped out the small guys that can go into business here as a contractor and build houses and be competitive with the larger guys. And this is just one cog in the wheel, there would be a huge benefit to the small bi, guys from a cash flow standpoint. There's, I understand, there's got to be safeguards, uh, such as no COs issued or anything like that until all the infrastructure certified and all. But you're approaching a situation in Santa Rosa County, we're going to have another housing shortage soon. There's very few lots out there available for builders to build on that are not thirty and forty years old in older subdivisions. And the county, you guys can tell me, you've seen very few plats come through the county in the last few years. Um, I've done a projection myself, in about a year and a half, two years, there's going to be very few lots to build on in this county. And if there's smaller builders that can come up through the ranks and build houses and be competitive with the larger guys, you're going to see prices go up drastically in this county. Not just at Santa Rosa, but at Scamion and everywhere else. And so I would challenge all to make this discussion or this idea a part of a larger project. What can we do to keep housing competitive in Santa Rosa County and bring in these smaller guys? And I know I'm opening up a can of worms maybe, but I don't intend to open up a can of worms, but offer a suggestion that would help us keep housing cost, uh, competitive here in this county, because I, someone who's been here thirty years, I see it going the opposite direction. And it's all going to be mostly because of competition and ability for the small guys to be able to be a player and compete. And that's where your competition comes from for the big guys. If the small guys can't get in there and compete and challenge the big guys to do their job better, then prices do go up, and I don't care if you're home building or anything else. That's, and as far as the plat act goes, yes, there is, um, my understanding, there's certain requirements, obviously you've got to be complied with for the plat act. Um, one of the things is you can't transfer title, but it doesn't prevent you from getting a building permit and building early, if I'm correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, Ms. Jones?
I'll just mention that our process hasn't significantly changed since oh four, oh five, oh six, you know, we have been through one fairly cons, fairly significant construction boom, if you will, with these requirements in place, so I'll just submit that.
Alright, Roger, is there any reason to keep this on for Thursday or just?
No, sir, this was an informational item that, that you had asked for.
Alright, and, uh, and it's very good information and I think we're going to hear more from, you know, contractors and builders and stuff in the future on, as we look at our LDC, so, thank you, appreciate that. Alright, go ahead, Roger.
Item number four is a, a preliminary plat for Pace Mill Creek, and this is phase two of, uh, of Pace Mill Creek. And this is a twenty lot, twenty-seven lot subdivision in section thirty-three, two north twenty-nine, and that is two and a half miles north on Schumacher Highway, take a ride on Education Drive and it's south on Pace Mill Way. Uh, this is a private subdivision, phase one has been constructed and the homes have been built, and so the developer's just moving to phase two. Okay, uh, with that, we move to item number five, which is the final plat that was discussed last week. Uh, we have worked through those issues, the only thing remaining, uh, to my knowledge, is the posting of the bond for the unconstruction improvements. And we'll leave them on the agenda, giving them till Wednesday to get that to us. And then Thursday morning, we'll come in and, and describe to the board, we either have the security or not. And make a recommendation.
Alright, and we'll move both those to Thursday without objection, hearing none, it passes. Do you have one quick question? Are we, there was some indication at the, uh, previous meetings that the board should look at these plats, uh, prior to approval. Are, are we going to look at those on an individual basis, if, if you, if each commissioner deems necessary or keep them?
If any of the commissioners like to see them personally, I'll make myself available to go through them. Or we can project them each meeting Monday with a PDF and you can see the overall, if you'd like to do that, what the board would like.
And I'm voicing that mainly because, you know, the public also has the right to see those plats and, you know, with sunshine, open, open government. I just wanted to make sure we followed up on that discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin.
I think it'd be better if we, uh, uh, direct staff to, to bring those plats to us, uh, on the screen Monday, because we have an awful lot of people that, uh, watch this at home and, and they'll get the benefit of it as well.
And I, I would agree with that, I don't think we need to burn up, you know, kill a bunch of trees to print it out, but if we could throw it up on the screen during discussion, yeah, that's simple, so, right.
Just to give you some history, is Roger used to bring copious amounts of the plats in the past and, and commissioners finally said, don't bring those up here, we figured you.
I remember in days, I, I.
We're happy to, we, we can move back the other way, certainly digitally, it, it makes it a lot easier and, and it is in the public record, man, so we're good.
Alright, alright, anything else then? Or if not, we'll close engineering report and move on to public service committee, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have two items. Item number one is discussion of the ship, second mortgage sub, subordination request for the property located at sixty-two oh four Weekly Street in Milton. There's backup in your, uh, agenda book, unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of floodplain variance request for eleven fifty-four Oyster Bay Drive in Milton, just go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, um, I will, and just for the record, uh, Mr. and Ms. Rowan are here, the, the requesters of this, uh. Just real simply, the, um, their engineer, uh, the soil analysis indicated that the, um, typical V-zone construction requirement, piling construction, uh, the soil conditions were, were not adequate to utilize the typical, uh, wood piling structure. And therefore they're asking for a variance that would allow for a, a monolithic slab with a, with a poured column. Uh, they do meet the elevation requirements, uh, but it would just be the, the type of construction that is being varied. I believe there is a sketch of that, probably your last sheet on the back would give you, if you're interested, to give you the pictorial view of how that would be constructed. And if you have any other, any questions, I'll try to answer those, or if you desire for, ask them a question, they're here.
Tony, one question, does this affect our insurance rating in any way or?
We do not believe it would, no, sir.
Commissioner Lynch.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch, and now we'll move on to Commissioner Williamson for public works committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have three items today. First item is discussion of resurfacing the following roads in District One at an estimated cost of a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Jenny Circle, Sanavilla Drive, south of Jenny Circle, Landmark Lane, Highland Boulevard to Pace Lane, Blackwater Street, West End, Regency Drive, Fair Oaks Drive to Williams Road, Patriot Drive, Compass Court and Wood Duck Drive. And I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of paving the following dirt roads in District One at an estimated cost of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Harrison Street, Bonfire Drive, Tuscaloosa Street to Santa Cruz Boulevard. And I recommend moving these to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of proposal from Florida Pest Control and Chemical Company in the amount of one hundred and one dollars per acre for ant control in county parks based on comparison shopping in consideration of three-year contract with annual renewals after initial contract period. We've got backup on that and I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Mr. Chairman, just one question to, uh, to the Chair to Avis, do we, what's our total acreage is?
We treat about two hundred and fifty acres in the parks, countywide.
And, and how often are they treated?
Annual.
Three, three, once a year?
Once a year, yes, sir.
Thank you, Avis, appreciate it.
And that's the reason for the treatment, it's season long, so if you treat it once per year, it should last the entire year. And if we do find, uh, you know, ant mounds in the parks, the, uh, contractor is responsible to go back and re-treat it, no additional charge.
That was my other question, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And this is actually a reduction in the price of what it was before?
Quite a bit.
Considerable reduction.
Yes, we've seen the price go down pretty dramatically over the three years we've been doing it, and that's the reason we feel like it's probably reached a point where it will not go down much, much lower than what it is right now, and we would like to get them under a three-year contract at this pricing, because we feel like it's extremely good pricing.
I, I will say that prior to using this annual treatment, we used to get numerous complaints in our parks about ants. And since we started this program a couple of years ago, those, those complaints have gone away, we, we don't get complaints anymore about ants in our parks.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Roger.
As we treat the parks, let's make sure we kill the ants and not drive them next door?
We're going to put up a routing sign. And I recommend move, move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson, at this time we'll go to Commissioner Melvin for budget and financial committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have eleven, eleven items this morning. Item number one is discussion of bids received for home substantial rehabilitation project located at five zero forty-one, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Drive in Milton, the low bidder meeting specification is Mike Moats Builders LLC with a bid of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is discussion of the bids received for home substantial, substantial rehabilitation project located at forty-three fifty-seven Pine Villa Circle in Pace. Low bidder meeting specifications is Kaiser Siding and Construction with a low bid of nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is discussion of bids received for Lime Rock Stabilization Base, the sole bidder meeting specifications is Martin Marietta Aggregates with a bid of twenty-five dollars and fifty cents a ton. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
One question, please, Mr. Chairman, through to Avis, Avis, that's the price delivered to our yard?
No, it is not. That's, that's the price for us to pick it up at their site.
Where at, Pensacola?
Uh, they, they have one site here in Milton, that's the twenty-five fifty, and then they have another site at the Port of Pensacola. That, that's the lower price that we can get it, if they have it available at the, at the Port of Pensacola. Material's slightly different, we actually prefer for most of our projects. our projects, the material, what we call the Bahama base, they bring it in from the Bahamas on barges. We actually prefer that material because it has more fines, you get better compaction on it, but it's not always available at the port.
And we save some at the port?
Sir?
We save, there is a lesser price per ton at the port?
Yes, sir. It's, I believe it was, I think it's 2550 here in Milton, at their side in Milton, and I believe it was 2450 or 24 at the port, it's slightly lower.
Right. And one other thing, how much do we go through in a year?
It varies from year to year, because we don't do a lot of projects. You know, on our road paving, most of our road paving, we use sand clay for base. But now on smaller projects such as turn lanes, a lot of times we'll use the lime rock base because it's so much more conducive to using in bad weather. It's not, you use sand clay, if you have weather like we've had today and this weekend, then you're pretty well shut down for several days or a week or two. Where using the lime rock base, it takes the weather much better, and you can finish a project much quicker. So a lot of our turn lanes and things where we, you know, where we're in busy highways and what have you, we like to make sure we can get finished with a project as quickly as possible. So we feel it's worth the extra expense to buy the lime rock for those type projects. But to answer your question, it varies from year to year. You know, one year we did, we put lime rock all the way into the Archie Glover Boat Ramp, and we, you know, we used a lot that year, because that was over a mile of paving. We built the base with lime rock because the conditions warranted it, because it was so wet in that area. And then, but that was just that one year. Most years, you know, we probably go through less than 1,000 tons. Of course, this past year, we built Schumuckla Springs Boat Ramp, and we used lime rock there in the parking lot, so we used quite a bit. Next year, we may use very little.
And we buy it just as we need it. We don't stockpile it.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four is discuss the rejection of bids received from the Navarre East Phase One Sewer Improvement Project, which is a CDBG-funded project, and rebid the project. Unless there are questions from the board, I'd recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing noted, passes.
Item number five is budget amendment 2013-96 in the amount of $64,347, carry forward funds to pay for Vision Construction ENT Incorporated for the completion of the Pace Community Center, becoming out of the Capital Projects Fund. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, before we move it?
Yes, sir.
I looked at this small book that we have on this project, and I don't know, I'm having a hard time understanding what we're paying for. I've seen a check signed by me, I've seen a check signed by Commissioner Williamson. If somebody could just tell me what the $65,000 is going to take care of, I'd feel better about it. Ms. Bell?
Commissioner, our balance on this, this is what our balance is based upon the retained due. Actually, we owed $1,433 plus the remaining $62,914 that we need to carry forward. But I will provide better backup for you so you can, so it'll be clear for you for Thursday's agenda.
Okay. And that's great. I just, and the reason it's coming out of general fund is because of the addition of, for usage for the county versus just it being a community center out of District One and Three?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Hearing no objections, it moves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number six is budget amendment 2013-97, the amount of $15,000 to fund the youth development programs at the YMCA from District Four Project Fund Reserves. I do this once a year. It's an outstanding program, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing noted, passes.
Item number seven is budget amendment 2013-98 in the amount of $16,590, which will carry forward funds for insurance premiums for the umbrella policy and the general liability policy, annual renewals, and this activity will be within the general fund. And I recommend approval, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing noted, passes.
Item number eight is budget amendment 2013-99 in the amount of $28,000 to fund the rebate of avalorum tax from the Electric Franchise Fee Fund to Avalanche Technologies due to improvements that led to the creation of jobs as approved at the November 8th, 2012, Board of County Commissioners meetings. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing noted, passes.
Item number nine is budget amendment 2013-100 in the amount of $200,000, which will recognize the 2012, 2013 Defense Infrastructure Grant Award, the DIG 1305, for purchase of land or secure easements around Whiting Field as identified in the joint land use study, the JLOS agreement is approved at the December 12, 2012 Board of County Commissioners, and this activity is within the grant fund. I recommend approval, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Just again, for clarification, I understood this grant was for fencing around Whiting Aviation Park. Am I mixing it up with something?
It's two different grants. This one is the Defense Infrastructure Grant. This is our annual grant that we've been fortunately getting in the past. The fencing grant we just received was from a different program that's been set up in the state of Florida just this year.
And this was approved by the board in December, and I think the fencing grant was maybe the last meeting or the meeting before then.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would like to point out that I'm sure Commissioner Salter and Williamson were going to point out about the Pace Community Center. I believe that's got to come out of those two.
That's right. I made the mistake. It's not from the general fund.
But I know they were just fixing to speak up and say something. They didn't want y'all to make a mistake.
Mr. Chairman, I thought that had already been approved.
Yeah, I just really thought that you took that from our recreation funds and put it in the general fund to pay for bidding.
Mr. Chairman, fortunately, we didn't vote on it today, and I can still count the three.
But, you know, I think for, for the math, it's already been taken out of your fund.
Have we sufficiently confused this subject so we can move on? Okay, did we move item number nine to Thursday without objection, Mr. Chairman? Hearing noted, passes.
Thank you, sir. Item number 10, budget amendment 2013-101 in the amount of $30,000, which will carry forward funds for additional building demolitions and allocate those funds for expenditure within the general fund. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
I still got another question.
Sure.
When we spend our dollars, our citizens' tax dollars, to demolition a building through the embankment procedure, we lean the property, of course, and I'm looking down here at Tony or, or, it's Angie. Could we get maybe a report on how much we've been able to recapture over the last few years, or so we know, if we got a deficit or we're coming out ahead? Okay. Tony, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Hearing no objections, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 11 is discussion of the county expenditures check register. I'm in the process of reviewing those expenditures, and I'll have that on your desk before Thursday morning. I recommend we move item number 11 to Thursday without objection.
Hearing no objections, it passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Melvin. Any other comments, questions from members of the board or from staff? I do have one item I would like to bring up before we close. Let everybody know that Piggly Wiggly is alive and well in Santa Rosa County. When I first started traveling south in 1961 with my family, the first place we went to was Beaufort, South Carolina, to meet, or my mother's sister and husband lived there. And one of the first things I did as a young boy is attend the grand opening of a Piggly Wiggly. We, a lot of you know I'm one of them darn Yankees that came back here and came down here in the Navy and never left, so we didn't have Piggly Wigglies up north. And whether you call it Piggly Wiggly or Hogly Wagly, I'm sure Ike Northrup, with the serious health conditions he's had lately, this has to be some good medicine for him to know that the grocery store in East Milton has become a Piggly Wiggly, and that, again, Piggly Wiggly is alive and well again in Santa Rosa County, and it's just one of those things, I think, is unique to me, unique to the South, and it's one of our monikers down here. So I applaud everybody, the growth of that again, and Ike, we got you in our prayers, hope you're doing a lot better. So, no other comments, then we are adjourned.